Office 7. Through the past, very about right at 10 o'clock. Course meeting order, roll call, Randy from Murphy.
Here.
David Ham.
Here.
And I'm here. Number four, approve of the minutes of last meeting, regular, July 31st, 2023.
Are these the minutes here? They they appear to be fine to me. They all make that much.
I'll second that. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, approved, disapproved monthly reports for the following. We have all them?
We do.
Assessor, county clerk.
County clerk.
Health department, treasurer, election board, and sheriff.
I believe we do.
Woo hoo.
I'll second that.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's gonna blow away.
Yeah. Yeah, it woke me up last night. Didn't wake me up at all then.
Yeah, it was thundering worse last night.
The extension guy?
Yes.
Will will we? Will they hire them or how?
Yes, OSU hires them.
OSU?
Yeah.
Have they hired anybody yet?
I don't think officially. I think the that OSU gal told me that up there the other day that
They had somebody.
They they advertise, they have to advertise for 10 days. And they the 10 days was up last week or what have you. And they have a really good applicant they're all pretty excited about. And no names were and but Jim Rhodes told me he evidently he's part of that hiring deal. And and then that lady that is the head of the department also told me that they had Somebody white. Yeah, yes, that's the.
Well, I see him. That's what they think of it is he go to that concept to me.
Right. Well, he's part of that. He's he's the the.
Produces that material and.
Well, Susan is the homestead or for the ladies, their stuff. And Greg is for the Ags with for the Ags stuff. But Susan will be took his place as the director that will put their budget together and handle the business deal. See, Karen was at till she retired and then Greg took that over.
Okay. Number six.
Right there. Yeah.
Oh, Ella.
That's okay.
One, did I sign it on? Left all of them for.
Gotta mark those in yellow and red where your name's signed.
Is this for the next one?
Yeah.
Yes, for the next one.
Oh. Uh, number six, discuss possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
I'll make the motion approve.
I I agree.
They down, huh?
Yeah.
What bid?
No, yeah.
Aye.
Well, it's something to do with that.
That's low as I've ever seen it.
Yeah. I think it's something to do with that cap ran out on the license plates or the
Oh, yeah.
The survey stuff.
Right.
That kind of stuff.
Cut it.
So it it. Hopefully.
Yeah, sign where I marked in yellow and in red.
Knocked down here?
No, you're the only one that signs those. In this meeting. That's why I said I marked it where you needed to sign.
I heard that.
You get long stick and block them on the head.
Yes.
Do the off on that person.
Those are blankets. I walked there. You've got blankets. You can't stand nothing else.
Well, it was it was in that pot.
No, I don't know if that was in the pot.
Just that one. That's the only one I signed on. You know?
I've been sitting at hospitals since 7:00.
Oh, really?
Trying to get blood sample. I felt like I come back. That's why I haven't eaten. I've been waiting. My doctor didn't sign the deal right before I arrived. Said, I got it. He goes, well, I guess we could let you go ahead and do it.
Oh, my gosh.
That's no joke. We got there just a little after 7:00.
Well, then they wanted you to fast, right?
Yeah, I thought so. I said, I'm gonna have to.
Oh, I'll do it tomorrow. That's what I tell mom.
Cause when I I checked it, I got one of the deals coming out. 65 when I came to the building. That's.
Low.
Low.
Very low for you. That's about what mine usually used to run. It doesn't need more. It's higher than that now.
That's low, isn't it though?
It's pretty horrible.
Seven years.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it gets low, like I alarm them from it.
That's good. Get something in you.
Yeah. Oh, God. Take that and check it. I got some blue conversers. I keep getting a girl on my bed, so. Come on in.
That's good.
One of them's probably 10 or 12.
Yeah, enough to make you feel better.
Yeah, and then wait for that thing to up so you don't.
Yeah.
Like it.
Right.
There's that blanket cover right there.
Yeah, cause those are blankets also, right there.
These are?
Yes. Thank you.
Number seven, discuss possible action regarding the transfer of $150,000 from the sheriff's service fee M and O to the capital outlay for the purpose of purchasing three new pickups.
So move.
I'll second.
Ayes?
Aye.
I know it gives something.
Are they saying what they're gonna do with their old goods?
Well, they transferred one.
One away last week.
Yeah, to the Albert Police Department. And then I don't know if they're gonna set a sign or. Or what.
I'll tell them when they'll get it.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's quarter times for bigger ones right now, but they won't get that $250. Number eight, discuss possible action regarding a surplus and resolution to junk an HP computer ID number B250.41 for the sheriff.
So move.
There's two pages for that one. Thank you.
Number 10, discuss possible action regarding the.
We didn't do time.
Oh, it's another Dell computer.
Yeah, it's another one, yeah.
Discuss possible action regarding a surplus and resolution to junk a Dell computer ID number B250.27 for the sheriff.
So move.
I'll second.
Ayes?
Aye.
One's a HP and one's a Dell. Now, number 10. Discuss possible action regarding a surplus and resolution to junk seven tasers ID number B628.1, B628.3, B628.4, B628.5, 628.6, 628.7, and B628.8 for the sheriff.
I'm gonna be.
These are all the ones. So and there's a whole bunch of papers. So nice the auditor.
You said on the radio, right?
Yeah.
There's three pictures.
Yeah, the paper is very plain now.
Can you possibly run this?
So you say you're you made the list.
Do you have a transcript kit? Only thing we have is.
Yeah.
Have you transferred a couple of year old?
I think we need that.
I'm sorry about that. Did we have a motion?
Yeah, I don't.
I'll say.
Ayes?
Yeah, I think I need them up there.
Renetta might want one.
She might.
Been for a few years.
True.
Yeah, but I'm gonna ask, well, what do they do with them?
Does old taser? I don't know.
Probably sitting back the other day. Well, they sit there and jump them. Probably. I didn't know how.
I did.
Or something.
Just wondered how you dispose of them.
Turkey practice, right?
How would the trash? Yeah, I don't know what you'd I mean, you'd back send them somewhere or my humor. I would think.
That would too. I don't know if she put anything on there as far as what they how they were disposing. They used to be a big thing. The officers had to know how they were disposing them.
Well, I just curious about these because.
Didn't have a place on there anymore for that.
Yeah.
And we used to have to put a reason, you know, now they're they don't have anything like that on them. Yep.
There are multiple ones there. I'll let you start on them.
Yeah, I'm gonna have two two papers for each one of these nowadays. So, yeah, you have to have a surplus and a disposal paper. We can't put it all on one page like this.
Give them some.
Thanks, dude. We're supposed to be going less paper. We had we had our own form that we had made.
Right.
That had all the.
Everything on it.
Yeah, it had the statutes on it and everything. I don't know why we can't use that, but they told Jennifer that they wanted us to.
We have.
Oh, yeah, I'm up here again. Well, I won't like it because I'm putting the same resolution on all those since I've got it under one deal. They won't like that.
Well, that's why I was wondering what they were going to do with the Mr. Hudson. Yeah, they're picking their pin.
I know. Yeah. And then their form doesn't even say anything about wanting, doesn't have a place to put that on there.
Yeah, you would think.
What they're gonna do with it.
I really wonder what they're gonna do with something like that. I mean.
Yeah.
Here's the duplicate. I think you just need to pass them up to the public.
Yeah.
Put them up by the playground.
Yeah. Don't they kind of shoot the wire out and stick it in your.
I don't know.
Hand held.
I don't know, but I sure don't ever want to. I don't ever want to have to get shot.
Are they not all that way? I don't know. I know some of them carry this too. Or.
I don't know.
I think the Jagers, they carry those hand holders.
Yeah, that's just one that you touch them.
Yeah, and they're not allowed to carry that.
Uh huh, yeah.
Like a hot shot.
Right, like a hot shot. Yeah, and I have. I have one of those.
Them kind are that kind, but then they can shoot the tip.
Oh.
I mean, them the cop kind.
Uh huh.
Close up or.
Or you can shoot through it. I just don't want to.
Ones are like pistol.
Yeah, shoot a couple of wires out there, yeah.
I don't want to turn it out.
I'd my sister got me with hers and.
Didn't knock you down?
Oh, yeah, you can't. You can't do nothing. It's just like you're in a full body cramp.
Oh, my.
And you think about it, but your arm won't move. You don't move, you know? And your whole body, you just got to fall.
Oh, wow.
It does. It shocks you for five seconds or more, it seems like.
Yeah.
Longer, but.
Yeah. I don't know how long.
Really hurt you. I mean, it does, but.
I miss one.
Funny.
Stuck together.
She's been wanting to nail you for a long time, brother. Me and the sister.
I I got her. I said, I'm gonna get it. I asked her, I said, do they work pretty good? And bam, that's all.
You should never ask.
Yeah.
She's just waiting.
That's it.
That's too funny.
She was gonna get me even if I asked, didn't ask.
Yeah, she probably was.
Number 12.
Eleven.
Number 11. Discuss possible action regarding the surplus and resolution.
Eleven.
Oh. Discuss possible action regarding the hot oil six month bid. That's number 11.
And did that those come out?
Yeah, well, let me go get them.
This is over that, the.
Mid bit.
Yeah, the bid of three cents a gallon difference. And I went to check in with people and and I got pictures the guy from Custer County sent me.
Yeah.
But that's what she's.
The oil quality.
Yes.
The high bid or the low bid or.
Yeah. See, this is what Custer County got.
What what did they say down the hall?
I I thought we should, we we have the ability to change that stuff here. They'll just have to sign off.
It says, but best lower.
Those are best.
Best quality.
Yeah.
Or cheapness.
Yeah. And these are what the Custer County commissioner showed me. They got the bid in Custer County and they were one load and this happened to the those are filters out there.
Distributor.
That's the people.
Unbelievable.
That's what happens.
Yes. I mean, it's a filter. It just flip.
Oh, wow.
All three filters on the distributor truck.
Oh, that costs some money to fix, I'll bet.
Well.
Take time.
If they can load them up once.
Well, sound dollars for the junk.
If it goes on through there and plugs your office up, there you are.
Well, you got to take it all apart, flush it all out.
Wow. Come on.
And and I guess my point is is that we've all Ergons who we've all did business with never had a sense difference and per gallon, which is not enough to go through these kind of things.
Well, and then take the chance what the oil's gonna be like when it gets late.
Right. Right. So anyway, I'm making a motion that we we go the six month bid and use Ergon rather than Wright Brothers who have low bid and this being the reason why is the quality of their their oil and.
I'll second that. Product quality.
Yeah.
All right.
Ayes?
Aye.
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 So, I mean, this will need to be attached.
Right, okay.
When we go to Brian about.
And put it with our six month bid?
Yes.
Okay. Sure as well.
I guess that's all I got in there.
In your new business?
Cause I'm aware of.
No, I haven't.
From 13, approved, disapproved, likely purchase order.
Wait a minute, can we go back one step?
Yeah, we can.
To the new business.
New business.
And I just want to bring it up that I was in here, well, after Greg's deal with and a lady from Incog heck, the Cog here. And I talked to and they Incog are the legislature supposedly in either 2019 or 2021, right before COVID, one way or the other. Passed a deal and it's about private money for private companies, like buildings or whatever. And.
Called CPAC.
It's, yeah, CPAC, P A C, right?
P A C E.
Yeah, CPAC is what and anyway, she says the commissioners have to make have a resolution and sign off. Well, I was just on the phone and Amy and I were here and I kept quizzing her. There's 13 counties in the state that's already done it. And like I said, it's private money and it's for private businesses or buildings, owners or whatever. And it's a green deal that they put in new windows, new heating and air, more highly efficient and water conservation, a lot of things. And about anything on remodeling or doing something to an older building or even when you're building new would qualify for.
Todd came and talked to me about something like this.
Yeah, she said she had talked to Todd.
We approve it through this.
We we approve this res.
Or whatever.
Resolution and supposedly there's no liability to.
It's basically for private people.
And.
Kind of a grant to help them get green stuff on their building.
And then the DA has to sign off.
And the DA and it's supposedly a slow interest, long term, low interest. My question to her was, and Amy can attest to this, I said, so if it's private for private, what do the commissioners?
Have to do.
What are we signing off on?
Yeah.
Where's the money come from?
The legis, no, it's private investors.
Uh huh.
Right. I don't understand either why the government's being involved.
I mean, she couldn't answer any of my questions. I said, so what is the interest today on one of these ones? Well, I don't know. The feds keep going up with the interest. I said, then what was it two months ago? I don't know. And and Incog, which is at Tulsa, is the administrator.
Would that have anything to do with the Noeda and the Cogs out there or?
Well, you would think, but they.
That I haven't heard nothing about any of them.
Well, you might ask about this deal. It's called CPAC.
Pace.
Pace, P A C E. And but Incog's gonna take all the administrative money and we are not supposed we're not supposed to have any liability. And so I don't get why we have to sign off. I mean.
Yeah, I don't know. What what why? What what part do we play in that other than signing a lot of the rest?
Well, that was my hesitation and I tried to ask her.
Nancy Graham. Nancy Graham, Nancy Graham.
Well, she does. She couldn't answer your questions. That makes me free.
But here is the deal that that kind of swapes the deal the other way.
No, it's a C and then a hyphen and then pace, P A C E.
C and hyphen and.
P A C E.
P A C E.
Yeah.
And what would you say the C cog or?
Incog.
Incog.
And that is I E N.
I N C O G.
Yeah, it's it's well, it's it's for Indians.
Uh huh.
And and that is essentially that cog is a cog that that has Tulsa. And so that, of course, it's where she did came from.
Right.
And of course, they're letting them administrate it, administer it because they draw a percentage.
Uh huh, okay.
But the legislature passed this deal and this, you know.
CPAC is the is the grant or it's a program?
That's a program.
Program, okay.
And if the Woodward County Commissioner's there, Woodward County, there are 13 counties already approved this.
A little insurance guy will be there probably.
That's that and Woodward has did it. Troy told me, I talked to Troy a little bit about trying to find out more. They did it over a year ago and he couldn't remember all the particulars. He was a little put out. He put in that new business in Moreland and he'd already did all that before they found out about this.
Got shot out of the saddle on it.
Well, yeah, I mean, what was done was too late to, but this lady said that Todd and Steve Sterling were the ones talking to him. I'm not opposed to it. I just I just.
Find out more about.
Answer of why we need to sign off on private into private.
And if we did sign off.
Especially if there's no state or federal money, you know, I can understand that little chain of commandant, but if it's private donations, why would we even be involved other than just, okay?
Well, what I've read is it's private money going to private and it's long term. They only have to make and in the in the deal, she kept saying assessments. And it made me think of property taxes and she said, no, that's a that's a poor choice of words they put in.
Assess.
It's assessments.
Yeah, you need windows, you need skylight.
I guess that's it, but I kept thinking property taxes and that's why we would be involved.
Yeah.
So it's, these are the participating counties. So it's Woodward, Garfield, and then down with these central ones and these two down here.
I mean, I'm not opposed to doing it if it's good, if it's something somebody can use, but I just before I put my John Henry on there, I want to know some more about it.
I want to make sure we're not liable for him.
And talk to maybe.
She's the one that would come.
Would you?
She told me that she wanted to come meet with all of us, but if she couldn't answer my question, they told us.
She gives you. I can afford to.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we need to call maybe Woodward County and talk to some there or there.
Well, that's who Troy White is with Woodward County.
Oh, okay.
But he couldn't remember.
So I wonder if Steve or Todd actually know any more than.
I haven't called either one of them and but she made it sound like we had to have a resolution, we had to sign off and our DA has to sign off. And then, but no, absolutely no liability to the county. Well, I mean, that I don't question her, but I'd like to know why.
Anytime you put our name on something, it could be all liability.
Well, that that's that was my thought and she couldn't tell me why we needed to sign off on private stuff.
Totally liable.
Well, and I think she was trying to, was she trying to say, once the DA signs off on it, then it doesn't hold you guys liable anyway or?
Well, yeah, but she was trying to talking in circles as far as I'm concerned.
No, I agree.
I don't know if she knows what she's, if she couldn't answer those questions, then I thought.
I thought somebody, if you ain't ready to talk to them.
Yeah, I mean, I I questioned how she convinced these other counties.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, that's what Todd told me. Said, maybe I should call the clerk over there, but I don't even know what questions to ask her, really. You know, so I thought, well, I could have her send me, you know, at least the stuff so we could look at it.
I conferred it to you. She sent it.
Oh, okay, she did.
Well, it is and then Sean is like that. I called Troy, but Clint, I think would be a big.
Clint Wyatt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe he can answer some more questions clearly, but Troy said it had been a year and he kind of forgot, you know? And no, but nobody in Woodward has used it.
Oh, okay.
That's funny. You would think over there, somebody would be interested.
Well, I gotta think.
If the commissioner don't even know about using it, then they might not.
I, well, here's the deal, you know, if she can't tell me what the interest is, the way interest rates have been going, then maybe it's not quite as low interest as she wants everybody to believe is what I'm getting at. That's my thought, you know, that maybe it's not a feasible.
Well, that.
Right.
I mean.
And these are the providers, so they are different investors. Like, is it investors, would you call it?
Well, are they private companies? Well, are they private companies?
Yeah.
Those are the investors into this group?
I think so.
Who? I can't see that far.
Well, it says like Brave Star Capital LLC, and then a minimum of five hundred thousand. Counterpoint Sustainable Real Estate, one million. Uh, Nuveen Green Capital, two million.
It's all investment brokers and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's.
Market.
So, I wonder if there's, if they're all brokers like that. I wonder if there's some way, I mean, do makes me wonder who holds the loan. Do they hold it, or, or they sell it out to somebody, or? The private, those investors do. Yeah. And, and the reason they're making it long term, but it makes me, makes me wonder about, and it's a fixed rate, that's another thing. That's, that is attractive about it, at least that borrower. Right. It, it's a fixed rate for the length of the, the loan or whatever, and I don't know what that length is. But I think it's long term, and it makes sense now that, about those investment deals, that they're, they're just putting it in like a, it. Right. Uh, you know, spreading it out to people and, and using their money to. Kind of like a mutual fund. Right. Is what they're using it as.
They're, they're, they're having. Then people listed there ain't got the risk, it's that guy that borrows it.
Well, well, that and the people that's invested. Yeah.
Well, didn't she say, like, if someone uh, invest in one of these, and then if they don't pay it off, whoever gets the billion X, then they continue the payments on it if it's not paid off?
Yeah, essentially, 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 the.
Kind of mishmash. It passes on.
The loan stays with the property.
Yes.
And they will have a lien on it that even if this outfit goes broke.
Why they want us to.
Whoever, whoever gets it.
That could be, because at some point it could become ours.
Well, it becomes a.
You think about it, the taxes.
If it's in our town and they got a private company a lien on it, and how many banks do that? I'll read them.
Well, I mean.
The loan stays with the property.
The, the borrower and the investor send to the investment company, like any of us, if we bought into that group, if it's on the mark, I mean, on the, the, then. That, that could be a protection issue for these investors.
We don't really know much about it.
Right, and I just wanted to bring that up so we can ask around and, and find out.
Try to find out what I find out.
Cause I'm not.
Ask around.
I wasn't.
She'll come back with some interest rates or some better.
She, she wants to come over here, and I think if it's a good deal, we need to do it, but I think we need to know what we're doing. Right. Is all I'm getting at. Right.
Well, and she needs to be able to answer.
That could be pretty vague. And, and I'm not sure she can, from what I asked her, you know, that's why I thought it was too early to set up an appointment until we had a chance to talk to some people that, that maybe know more than she did.
That's kind of scary that they got her, well, being the one going out and talking with you, but she can't answer the question.
That's true, but she had worked for Incog, and they created this deal. She said she was kind of burnt out, so they kind of put, and I imagine she may be great at administering it.
Another.
That they're gonna get paid for, but she may not understand.
All the particulars.
Yes, yes.
True, yeah.
But they need a salesman.
Yeah.
Essentially for this deal. Right. Uh, that knows the answer to every question we ask.
Yeah.
True.
Because it threw up a big red flag to me, if it's private money going to private. Right. Individuals, why, why does it need our involvement?
Right, because of that, what she said, that, that loan that stays with the property.
Well, yeah, that, but still, that shouldn't involve us, because unless we, they foreclose and we get the property, we just have to sell it.
Yeah, sell it.
And it have to, and that was kind of liens. I know an IRS lien stays with the property. If those people file bankruptcy or whatever, that lien is on that property, and the new buyer has to.
Pay that off.
Pay it up, yeah. And, and that's where I'm saying it's probably the new deal. Right. Uh, that kind of deal like an IRS lien is why they're doing that. It, it's to avoid somebody filing bankruptcy that took out one of the loans.
Hang it.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's all I have. On that.
Okay, number thirteen, approve, disapprove blanket purchase order.
I move we do so. I'll second that.
Ayes?
Aye.
Aye. And number fourteen, motion to adjourn.
I move we do that.
Do, second that.
Ayes.